Good afternoon, everyone. This work session will now come to order. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce three interns I have with me. Mr. Travis Francis. Say hello. Beside him is Mr. Al Hassan. And Justin.
Mr. Chair, is that Travis Francis from the Carver Center? I remember you Travis Francis. Yeah, nice to see you.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a suggestion for you, something that I've instituted in my office, that your staff is not allowed to be better dressed than you are.
Well, that's true. That's true. That's true. They also have more hair than I do. Okay. Let me see what's going on here. I see we have a lot of speakers. See if they're all here to speak about. Why don't we... Why don't we start real fast and then we will get to our speakers in a minute and see if we can hurry up and get through that. Matter of fact, let's do the speakers first. The speakers are here, as I can tell. Oh, okay. Well, actually, it's not so many speakers. It's probably four on different items, so it's probably not a big deal. So we'll go with the regular course of business, starting with page one, Bill 4423, David Baicoff.
Good afternoon.
Okay, this is for Federal Assistance to Firefighters Grant. Go right ahead.
Thanks, sir. The Fire Department in Baltimore County were awarded a grant through the Federal Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program, which is an annual competitive grant program administered by FEMA. This award is in total of $1.08 million to us to provide mental health care through the... through peer support program training, as well as cancer screening to our firefighter, to all of our eligible firefighters and EMS providers.
Thank you. Any questions, comments by the members? Hearing none, we'll move right along to 4523, Limited Emergency Donations.
Yes, sir. Following the recent Baltimore City water crisis, in which we were forced to announce boil water notices and reduce water distribution to a large portion of the east side of Baltimore... west side of Baltimore County, it became apparent that there is a necessity for, in times of limited emergencies, which means the county executive has not declared a state of emergency. There is opportunities for the... for the public and for our business partners to contribute. This bill would allow us to accept donations up to $5,000 for things like water, personal hygiene products during small disasters without going through what is normally the donations process for the county. The donations acceptance would be limited to the appointed emergency manager, the chief administrative officer, and the county executive. And they... A report would be filed within 30 days of any acceptance of these awards, of these donations to the council for review.
Okay. Any questions or comments by the members? Okay, thank you, sir. Next, we're going to switch gears and go to the appointment. Appointment to the Police Accountability Board, Mr. Scott Richmond. It's your guy. And by the way, those watching, we have Councilman Catch is on the line. He's joining us virtually. Hello, Councilman Catch.
Hello.
Good. Go ahead, Councilman Ortell.
Okay. I'd like to introduce Scott Richmond. Scott is the sixth district nominee for the Police Accountability Board. He was nominated by the county executive and myself. Scott's a successful attorney, has been in the law arena for a long time. A father, Towson resident in our stony community here in Towson. I think he'll be a balanced, fair, and knowledgeable member of the board. He's been vetted by many people that have worked closely with the Police Accountability Board and were happy to have you be in front of us for nomination.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Richmond, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself? And we certainly appreciate you stepping up to provide this service to the county.
Yes, yes, thank you, Chairman Jones and distinguished members of the council. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Scott Richmond. I am applying for the Police Accountability Board. I do believe it's an incredible opportunity to give back to the community. As Councilman Ortell mentioned, I'm a resident of Towson. I've been there for four years now. Also now I have an 18-month-old son. Been a Maryland resident for about 25 years now. I was living in downtown Baltimore. While I was in Baltimore, I was president of my condo association for about 15 years. From New York originally, came down to Maryland for school. I went to school at College Park, then came up to University of Maryland for law school. After law school, I clerked for Judge Althea Handy in the Baltimore City Circuit Court, then joined the State's Attorney's Office in Baltimore City. I was there for approximately six years. During that time, I had the opportunity to work with members of the community. I was promoted a number of times, ending as the chief attorney of the district court at Wabash. So I worked with a number of community organizations. Also was responsible for supervising prosecutors investigating cases during my time as a prosecutor. I worked with not only police officers, other prosecutors, members of the community. One of the other reasons I applied is I recently completed my service in Baltimore City in the Environmental Control Board. The Environmental Control Board, I don't know if people know, they oversee quality of life citations. And there's a lot of things, I think there was some analogous sort of guidelines or missions between this board and what I was doing at the ECB. I started as a board member and then ended as the chair. But the mission there was to provide equitable hearing process, encouraging changed behavior, and strengthening relationships between government agencies and the community, which I do think is very important here. And I hope to take some of the skills that I got as a prosecutor and some of the lessons I had learned from reviewing body camera footage, going on ride-alongs, use of force trainings, various... those type of activities and take them into here. I will note briefly, I know that there was some opposition to my nomination, I guess due to the fact that I'd been a prosecutor. And apparently on my website, it says that I've defended police officers in the past. And I will note, I am a... I am an attorney. I'm primarily... 95% of my work is civil litigation. I do products liability and mass torts. I would say less than probably 5% of my practice is criminal defense for representing police officers. And I've represented, I would say, I can count on one hand the number of police officers I've ever represented. And really, I frankly listed on my website because I sort of felt honored that some, you know, people that I've worked with in the past thought that I, you know, would be the person to represent them. But just by way of background, I've probably represented one police officer in the last five years. Prior to that, it's mostly traffic matters. I've never represented a Baltimore County police officer. I've never represented anyone at a trial board proceeding. But I do actually think the criminal defense work gives me an important perspective as well because, like all criminal defense work, it involves cross-examining police officers, reading police reports, reviewing police video camera. So I do think this position, you know, provides me a unique opportunity because I've seen both sides of it. And I do think, you know, I'm someone that has followed the law for my entire career. I hope to take this position on and view it objectively and follow all the applicable statutes and regulations. I thank the council for my consideration and happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Thank you, Mr. Richmond. Certainly appreciate your opening remarks, so to speak. Are there any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Caligari, can I ask you a question? So there were five candidates that were interviewed by the panel.
Okay, I guess want to make sure we can hear him and see him online.
Okay, sorry.
So why don't you... Why don't you... Can you come up here and sit beside Mr. Richmond or speak into that microphone so that people can hear you and see you?
So, Mr. Caligari, how many individuals were interviewed for this position?
Councilman Marks, there were five completed applications that were submitted. All member or all people who submitted an application received an interview.
Okay, can you describe the interview process?
It was an interview with members of the Executive Administrative Office. It was a diverse group. And again, the same questions were asked of all the members or all the applicants for the position. After the interviews were concluded, the members of that group met and forwarded their recommendations to the county executive, who had the opportunity to review the applications, the resumes, and the relevant background of each applicant individual. And Mr. Richmond was selected as the county executive's nominee for this position.
And the county executive has full confidence in his qualifications?
Based on my conversation with the county executive, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from the members? Just to be clear, this is Councilman Ortell's nominee, correct? Any additional questions, comments from the members? Thank you very much, gentlemen. We're going to bring in the... I know we have some speakers. And we call our first speaker. Chris?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our first speaker is Cindy Farquhar. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. You are on as a panelist, and you begin your testimony.
Oh, am I unmuted?
Yes, you could have unmuted yourself, but you are unmuted now.
You can turn your camera on if you like.
I... I'm sorry, I can't even see you, so I'm having a tough time with that, but I appreciate your asking. Anyway, I'm Cindy Farquhar, and I'm sitting at home in my pink room, and this will be very brief. And that is that my reading of the website of Mr. Richmond most impressed me was the lack of any volunteer work. The Environmental Control Board is a position for which he received money and which basically polices front yards. And while it's certainly necessary, I would never say it's not necessary, it doesn't qualify him for this job. And the other part is that Mr. Caligari was asked about the interview process, and yet he never said anything about what the questions were. And this has been my beef all along. Why is it that the public cannot know the questions? I don't ask to know the personal history of people that are applying for county jobs, you know, because that's all protected stuff. But I do ask to know what the questions are. You're representing me. Why can't I know what it is you're thinking? I've asked Aziz Patoka this, too. Why can't I know what you're thinking would make a good Police Accountability Board person? I thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much, and we certainly appreciate your call. And we'll take what you say on the advisement. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Peta Richkus, and Ms. Richkus is here in person.
Hello, Ms. Richkus.
My opposition to this nomination is not about Mr. Richmond. He's a partner with a 120-year-old law firm. But his background and experience as a former state's attorney and as a lawyer who defends prosecutors does not build public trust in the PAB. Prosecutors and police are interdependent, meaning they rely on each other for information and access to do their jobs. And that creates enormous conflicts of interest that undermine prosecutors' willingness to charge and prosecute police for misconduct and violence. A few facts to explain the need for trust in the Police Accountability Board. One, according to a national policing database, Baltimore County police have killed more civilians than 66% of the departments nationwide, and arrest black people almost three times more than whites for low-level, nonviolent offenses. Two, for several years, the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention has ranked Baltimore County number one in the state for the most civilian deaths involving law enforcement officers. Three, county police killings of two black residents in 2016 and 2019 resulted in multimillion-dollar wrongful death settlements while the police officers responsible were not prosecuted. Four, in the past five years, there were over 1,000 reported use of force incidents in Baltimore County disproportionately against black and brown residents. And finally, five, traffic stop data from 2021 indicates that 68% of stops in Baltimore County were of black or brown residents, even though only 42% of county residents are non-white. The PAB does not need a nominee who's been part of that system. Whether it's to recommend policy changes or evaluate instances when law enforcement officers are credibly accused of misconduct, Mr. Richmond's background has a built-in potential for an appearance of conflicts of interest. This is not what the Police Accountability Board should look like, especially to those segments of the community most impacted by police misconduct and abuse of the use of force are BIPOC and other marginalized residents. Sometimes, even a good process falls short. I understand it's challenging to recruit for the PAB, but better to restart the process, identify a better candidate, and do more to engage the community to ensure a transparent and independent citizen-led PAB. Thank you for your attention, if you have any questions.
Thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Richkus. Appreciate it very much. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Rose Kinder. Ms. Kinder, you're on as a panelist, and you begin your testimony.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm a resident of District Six, and I'm speaking to oppose the nomination of Mr. Richmond to the Accountability... Police Accountability Board. As many of you are aware, there is tremendous community opposition to this nomination as there's nothing in Mr. Richmond's background that seems to qualify him for this position of working with heads of law enforcement and the community to improve matters of policing. Rather, Mr. Richmond's professional experience as a state's attorney and a civil litigator will put yet another attorney on this board, providing a potent voice for law enforcement and not the residents of Baltimore County. Many of you are maybe unaware of this, but we already have an autocratic attorney as the board chair of this board. This nomination is an abomination. I'm not sure why this nomination has not been polled as the community has been vociferous to date with many letters and calls to council members. What is going on here? I urge you to vote no on Mr. Richmond. He may be very willing to step forward as a community member, but his background does not qualify him, as previous people have pointed out. This is a position where community perception and community trust is absolutely critical. It is absolutely important that we have accountability for our police and accountability on our Police Accountability Board. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Kinder, for your comments. We certainly appreciate you taking the time to share it with us. Any other speakers, Ms. Bel Castro?
No, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Rogers?
Good afternoon, council members and Mr. Chair. Thank you for recognizing me. I did want to add one comment on behalf of the administration. The questions that are presented to candidates are, as was indicated, the same consistent questions that we have used from the beginning of this process. In early interviews, I too participated. I did not participate in this round of interviews. But the questions were actually given to the Baltimore County Coalition for Police Accountability quite some time ago, and the administration is more than happy to share the questions. Thank you, sir.
Sure. Any additional questions or comments from the members? Thank you. We will move on to the next reappointment to the Police Accountability Board,
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mind if I...
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wanted to take a minute to introduce Mr. Pete Fitzpatrick for reappointment to the Police Accountability Board. Mr. Fitzpatrick's background in the first responder community over the decades have, one, given him a unique perspective, one for interacting with all levels of our first responder community, from their conduct, not just in the streets, interacting with the public, but also conduct and training leading up to how they do interact with the public. I believe he's been a value-added to the Police Accountability Board on his tenure. And he is also one of the few members that was appointed, but also had a shorter term because of the timing in which the Police Accountability... the Police Accountability Board was established. So, one, this is a reappointment, but also, I think, committing to him serving out a full term versus a partial term due to the logistics of starting the board in the first place. So with that, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Chairman Jones, members of the council. Thank you for having me here today, entertaining my nomination for the Baltimore County Police Accountability Board. Also, I thank County Executive Doloshevsky for the nomination to a full term, and Councilman Young for his support of that nomination. In the year since I was last before you, much work has been done. The board members and I have completed training required of us, have gone on ride-alongs with patrol units of the Baltimore County Police Department, had many presentations on policies and procedures under which the department operates. We've appointed members to... civilian members to the Administrative Charging Committee and to the police trial boards. And we have... did submit our first annual report to the county executive. Much has been done, but there is still much to do. The board and the committees and boards to which it appoints civilian members is really just getting into the meat of its work. Until the first of last month, the Baltimore County Police Department complete disciplinary process was still covered under the existing collective bargaining agreement, which was grandfathered under the enabling legislation. To that end, the board is just starting to receive citizen complaints and reports, and the new civilian-inclusive disciplinary process is just getting underway. It will fall to the board to assess the effectiveness of these measures, and I really look forward to being part of that assessment and improving that process as it grows. And I feel like I bring a... as Councilman Young mentioned, I feel like I bring a new perspective as a citizen of the county and a person with a few decades of experience in the emergency response community as a paramedic. I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to advocate for a couple of areas where I see the board growth and reshaping of the board, and I hope you'll entertain these. I'd like to hope as the board gets into its work, the council will continue to constantly, you know, look to evolve its role, perhaps including more room for civilian review of departmental policies and procedure changes. The Baltimore County Police Department has a robust portfolio of policies and procedures, and these policies and procedures shape how policing is done at the street level. And I feel like by interjecting more independent review and civilian review of these departmental policies, the board can better meet its mandate to ensure more accountability of policing to the citizens. My second ask is probably a little odd for someone here asking for the council for a reappointment, but it's that the council continues to seek out more diverse members to appoint to the board. Currently, the board has no Latinx members, and this is a county where the Latinx population is growing, and this is a population that has been historically underrepresented and a bit overpoliced. Again, it's kind of an odd thing to ask. It's probably the most cisgender heterosexual white guy you'll meet today. But I just have learned that these diverse perspectives really provide what's needed to make accountability work for all of the county's citizens. Finally, I have one more request in terms of future allocation for resources for policing in Baltimore County, and that is that the council do whatever it can to support and expand the Baltimore County Police Department's Mobile Crisis Team. This team's ability to get mental health clinicians to where a person experiencing a crisis needs them most is the biggest game changer I've seen in three decades in emergency response. In that time, we put AEDs in every public place and taught teachers how to apply tourniquets. But I've not seen anything that can impact outcomes the way the Mobile Crisis Team can. And I urge the council to seek and take every opportunity to expand that unit's reach and capabilities. And I thank you for your time, and we'll entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Any questions or comments from the members?
This is a question more common, if I may.
Sure, absolutely.
One, just wanted to make sure I also took the opportunity to thank you for the candid conversation about reappointment. You allowed for, and one offered, the ability to try and find diverse candidates for the position to represent the district and the community. And what I found, and you found, and I think some of my other council members found, is that it's hard to find folks that, one, understand the importance and also the role that the PAB can play, which led to folks that would otherwise wanted to be part of it but were concerned about their own relationship, their own safety in their community, which has created a conversation that has started because of your openness and willingness to search out those folks that otherwise wouldn't have happened. So I appreciate your willingness to, one, share with us, and I hope that, one, to be an advocate and also work with the PAB to help educate folks in the community about the role that you all play to then find more diverse candidates that are comfortable with serving in that capacity, and I look forward to working with you on that.
Thank you very much. Any additional questions, comments from the members? We have a speaker, Ms. Richkus. Thank you very much, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you again, Chairman Jones and members of the council. As I did when he was first named to the Police Accountability Board, I'd like to add my name in support of the renomination of Pete Fitzpatrick, representing District One. Thank you, Pete, for your service toward the common goals of equitable and just treatment for all, mutual respect among police and the community, greater public safety, and the police accountability intended by Maryland and Baltimore County law. I think his suggestions are excellent, and I'm thrilled that he shared them with you, Councilman Young and fellow members. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Richkus. Next, we'll move on to... Next, we'll move on to appointment to the Design Review Committee, Mr. Scott Walters.
Hey, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Mr. Walters, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure, absolutely. I'm a design principal with a architecture firm, Hord Copeland Motte, here in Baltimore City. I've served in a design leadership capacity with this firm over the past almost decade now. I've had a large tenure in public service as president of AIA Baltimore, which is the American Institute of Architects, as well as served on the State Board and as well as the Baltimore Architecture Foundation in various capacities over the past 10 years.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Thank you very much, sir. Thanks for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Next reappointment to the Design Review Committee is Chris. I'm gonna punt this to you. I can give it a try. Om Kurjekar?
He's online.
Okay.
Hello. Hi. I'm sorry. I cannot turn on my video, so I'm trying for one second.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I cannot. It won't allow me to turn my video, so I will just speak. Hopefully, everyone can hear me.
Yes, you can start with the pronunciation of your name. I may have gotten it wrong.
No problem. My name is Om Kurjekar. It's a little hard to pronounce, but it's Kurjekar. I, yep.
Okay.
It's actually typing incorrectly, but no problem. I am a principal and landscape architect at the firm of Hord Copeland Motte. I am really glad to be here, and I appreciate the opportunity to present myself to the commission. And I, just to give me my background, I am actually originally from India, but I have lived in the United States for the last 24 years. I came here for graduate school. I'm trained as an architect and a landscape architect, and I'm a practicing landscape architect and licensed in Maryland, Pennsylvania, and Virginia. I also have served as the president and the president of the chapter, President's Council for National ASLA and Local Maryland ASLA Chapters here. ASLA is American Society of Landscape Architects. I also serve on a couple other boards at the national level of the ASLA and served as a design leader in the firm of Hord Copeland Motte. I'm really glad to be considered for this position and look forward to any questions anyone may have. Thank you.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. Are there any questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Yes. Did I hear Mr. Walters say he was also at Hord Copeland and Motte as well? He said it very quickly.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, Scott Walters is also.
Thank you, Mr. Kurjekar. So, Hord Copeland Motte is an excellent architecture firm, and I know that both of you bring different disciplines, one architecture and one landscape architecture. So, I just wanted to make sure that I understood it correctly. It's a good firm. Sounds like two very qualified candidates. I just wanted to be clear in my head. Thank you.
Yes, that is correct. Scott is an architect principal, and I'm a landscape architect principal. So, you have that absolutely correct.
Thank you, Mr. Kurjekar.
Thank you.
Councilman Mark?
And it says here you won an award for designing Wilson Point Park. This is the Wilson Point Park that's local to us?
Yes, that is the Wilson Point Park local to us.
That's a beautiful park.
Thank you.
Good job with that, yeah.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Sure, great job.
Chair, I would defend your pronunciation because his name was misspelled in our agenda, by the way.
Yes, we just did some research, and it was sent to us.
Begins with a K, K, not a J, which makes it infinitely more tough to pronounce.
Sorry about that.
No, it's not your fault. It was ours.
It's my family's fault for making it very hard, so thank you.
That's my excuse for getting it wrong.
Thanks.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks.
For your willingness to serve and being here. Next, we'll move on to page 51. Michael Reed, Director of the Office of Information Technology. Michael Reed.
How are you?
Afternoon, I guess.
Let me see, Resolution 1923, accepting donation enterprise network extender.
Yes, sir. So, for the public safety training facility at Stevenson, the old Stevenson campus, I believe it's referred to, it's, does not get adequate cell service within the building. There is to the perimeter. So, we worked with Verizon, who is the county's primary cellular provider, and they're going to install network extenders within the facility. This is standard practice for them. They're actually installed in this building as well. There's one right there in the ceiling next to the light fixture. We're going to take on the county, and our budget is going to take on the cost of installation of these devices. Verizon is willing to cover the cost of the hardware itself. I wouldn't call it goodwill as much as part of our contract with them and their obligation to provide service in those areas. So, again, standard practice. We've done it before. Because they're offering the hardware to us without cost, we're considering it a gift, so to speak, so we wanted to bring it in front of the council. One of the questions I know that was asked of us by the auditors earlier this afternoon was what other steps we have taken to kind of mitigate this. There's very little we're actually able to do because there's just not service in this area. We've worked with Motorola to get public safety radios through a bridge device to work on the facility, but there's not much of another option that we have to get cell service to this facility.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none while we have you, Mr. Freed. We'll move on to page 39, Amendment to a Contract with the United States Tower Services.
Yes, sir. And I believe there's two items there. It's for a primary and then a backup contractor. So, these are both contracts that were competitively bid. This is for the Office of Information Technology on behalf of the county maintains and operates 21 service towers, radio towers throughout the county. There's highly specialized skills that are required in these vendors, and we have a primary and then a backup vendor, so we always start with our primary vendor for any maintenance. If they're unavailable, we'll use the backup. This is upping the cap on those contracts to allow for expenditures, or allow for additional expenditures. Again, routine maintenance as we're uncovering things, sometimes we'll have to paint the towers, those sorts of things.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, thank you very much, Mr. Freed.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. Now, we'll move on to page 53, Resolution 20-23, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll be modifying the designation for the community of our beauties as a sustainable community. This is actually a little bit, long time coming, lost in the designations of different areas around the Southwest, but we've been working with the administration on making this happen for the area as well as just District One. So, the community expects it. They've been waiting for it and happy to present it in front of the council. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none. Don't think we have any speakers. Thank you very much, Councilman Young. Next, we'll move on to page 54, Dr. Jennifer Lynch, Acting Director of the Department of Economic and Workforce Development.
Good afternoon. As you know, I'm not Dr. Jennifer Lynch. I am Angelique Paphinis Newport, Fiscal Manager for the Department of Economic and Workforce Development. I'm accompanied by our new director, Marcus Wang, whose appointment will come before you in September. It's my pleasure to sit before you today to request the approval of the Fiscal Year 24 Arts and Sciences Grants Portfolio totaling $3.88 million. This portfolio includes general fund operating grants totaling $2.2,840,000, and 19 tourism grants totaling $680,000. Also included are grants totaling $325,000 funded by a grant from the Maryland State Arts Council and a selection of additional grants totaling $34,500. The county's Commission on Arts and Sciences reviews and recommends grant awards based on a variety of criteria, including the benefit to our community. The recommendations represent a diverse portfolio that enhances our multicultural programming and experiences for residents of all ages. This year's grant portfolio includes several grantees that provide field trips, classes, camps, and cultural experiences for our youth, including the Baltimore Symphony Orchestra, the Maryland Zoo, the Baltimore Museum of Art, the Walters Art Museum, and the BNO Railroad Museum. In addition, these organizations have served our adult residents by providing both cultural experiences and employment opportunities. Last year, these organizations served over 186,000 Baltimore County residents and employed 288 residents. During this year's Budget Town Hall Series, you had the pleasure of listening to the requests of our residents. In addition, the department has appreciated your ongoing support for the cultural offerings in your districts. This year, we hope you will favorably approve funding to support the Fire Museum, the Glenn Martin Aviation Center, the Urban Nature Center, the Gordon Center, the Baltimore Classical Guitar Society, the Towson University Asian Art and Cultural Center, the Historical Society of Baltimore County, and more. I humbly request your favorable approval for the Fiscal Year 24 Arts and Sciences Grants Portfolio. I'm happy to take any questions now.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Councilman Erto.
One quick question. Do you know if any of the funds will go to the Holt Center for the Arts in Oberle Fullerton?
I'm not sure. Let me see. Let me get the list, and I will tell you. I don't, it doesn't sound familiar, but let me just double check, because there are new ones every year. No, sir, it doesn't look like, doesn't look like that this year, but they should definitely apply for next year.
Do you believe that's just because they didn't apply for money, or do they? How does that work?
I suspect it's because they didn't apply. I mean, the applications are all on the website, and the, there are notices sent out to the community and the arts organizations, so I think that's why.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Sure.
It's Newport, correct? Thank you. All right, we will move on to page 10, Deb Shindel.
Good afternoon, councilmen and members of the council. The administration is requesting an approval of an amendment to a contract for petroleum services and total environmental concepts to provide maintenance, repair, and inspections of fuel tanks located at various sites. The total compensation will increase from $825,000 to $1,759,355. This is an increase of $934,355.5. This is for us to continue our annual inspections of all above-ground and below-ground fuel tanks and also be able to not only repair when we have, find incidents when we are doing our inspections, but also actively continue replacing old tanks that may be in place that are just ready to be recycled out and filled with new ones.
Okay. Are there any questions, comments from the members? Hearing none. Okay, Ms. Shindel, thank you very much. We'll move on to page 14, Andrea Walker, Director of Public Works and Transportation.
Good afternoon, chairman and members of the council. I have with me today our Deputy Director for Debs, Brad Lock, and he's going to answer any technical questions that you all may have associated with this item. The administration is requesting approval of two contracts with EA Engineering, Science and Technology, and AKRF, which is a joint venture to provide on-call consultant services for various shoreline erosion and enhancement projects throughout the county. Each contract will commence upon county approval and continue for five years. They are available for renewal for an additional two, two additional one-year periods. The compensation for each should not exceed $2 million for the combined maximum compensation of $4 million. This would be for the entire seven-plus-year term of this contract. The contractors will provide professional services for work associated with the shoreline erosion and enhancement design services throughout the county. Some of those services include planning, design, permitting, contract preparation, construction management, and post-construction monitoring for various shoreline erosion control and enhancement projects. These services are needed to continue the implementation of our waterway restoration program and to assist in ensuring that we are in compliance with our Chesapeake Bay TMDL, Total Maximum Daily Loads, requirements for our MS4 discharge permit mandates. With that, we can take any questions that you may have.
Well, are there any questions, comments from the members? Hearing none, thank you, Ms. Director Walker. And next, Bradley, you could stay there, and we will move right on to page 18, the contract for tree maintenance. Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Chair, members of the council. My name is Brady Locker. I'm the Deputy Director of Environmental Department of Environmental Protection Sustainability. I have with me Rasiw Toblada, who will be seeing you in the coming weeks and for official confirmation at the end of August. The administration is requesting approval of four contracts to provide on-call reforestation and landscape tree maintenance services to meet the county's reforestation requirements under the Maryland Forest Conservation Act and the county's Phase II Chesapeake Bay Watershed Implementation Plan, otherwise known as the WIP. The four contractors are Breeze Lawn Care and Landscaping, Empire Landscaping, Environmental Quality Resources, known as EQR, and Wright Environmental Land Services. Each contract commences upon council approval, continues for three years, and will renew automatically for seven additional one-year periods with the option to extend the initial term or any renewal term an additional 120 days. The contract does not specify a maximum compensation for the initial three-year term or for the entire 10-year and four-month term, including the renewal and extension periods. Compensation for all contractors combined is limited to the amount appropriated for these services for the entire contract term. The department advised that estimated compensation, we advised that the estimated compensation for all four contracts is expected to be about $2.5 million for the entire 10-year, four-month period.
Okay. I think you're, any questions, comments from the members? Hearing none, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. Next, we'll move on to page 27. Call up Director Steve Lafferty.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. The administration is requesting approval of a contract to acquire 12 acres of land at the Security Square Mall property for $6.85 million. This is a unique opportunity for us to continue to advance the redevelopment of that site, and with this acquisition, we will now be in control of one-third of the property that is at the mall. This location will also additional, add additional leverage for us as we try to work on redevelopment with the other owners. As you know from previous discussions, there are multiple owners on the site. Enabling us to purchase this property along Rolling Road will give us the opportunity to look at both sides of the property, both the east and the west, and to work with those owners in a different capacity. This is currently an open parking lot. It will not include the building that is going to continue under the same ownership by Security Ward, but also then will allow us then 12 acres of opportunity for possible residential as well as entertainment, according to the reimagined Security Square plan that was rolled out in May as part of the charrette. The owner initially asked for $7 million. We do have an appraisal for 6.403. We negotiated this with him. He was really not willing to come down much further than where we were, which is why we ended up at a negotiated price a little bit higher than the actual appraised value. We're very fortunate that the state continues to be a partner with the county and has provided $5 million along with the $5 million the county executive put in this year's budget that the council's already approved. So with those funds, we're able to execute hopefully this contract in order to add to our own portfolio and enhance our ability to redevelop the site, with that as for your approval.
Yeah, thank you, Director Lafferty. I guess that you can, I guess before next Monday, if you could be so kind as to share with us the copy of the appraisal?
Yes, sir.
Now, any questions?
Yes.
I had a question. Director Lafferty, are we going to be the developer at Security Square Mall, or are we turning this over to someone?
Actually, we're currently exploring the opportunity to bring in a third party who can serve basically in an advisory capacity to help us with the redevelopment. We don't do development. We recognize that this is one of our limitations, so that we're going to have to bring in third parties to help us redevelop. Now, whether we do it with a single master developer and enter into a master development agreement, or whether or not we're able to bring in multiple developers based upon their expertise really hasn't been determined.
Would that be a situation where we sell the land back? So we've, we're purchasing it. We're not going to give it away, correct?
We're absolutely not going to give it away. We've talked more about a public-private partnership, where perhaps the county retains ownership, but we're able to enter into long-term lease agreements, as often is done. Even, for instance, the dorms at Towson University, as you know, Councilman, is owned by the university, but they have an agreement for the construction of and the operation of those buildings. Whether that's the correct way to go is why we need some outside expertise to help us better discern really what's the best role for the county so that we maximize not only what we want in the community ones, but also that we retain really control over the future of that site.
Have we looked at, and I know I haven't been to any of the charrettes, but are we looking at any kind of economic development there as far as manufacturing, any kind of businesses that drive, that create better jobs for people in that area? Because that's one of the more economically depressed areas in the county.
The zoning allows for pretty extensive and intensive uses of the site. The way the charrette has basically the outcome of the charrette, which is more aspirational, is primarily residential, retail, entertainment, with some recreational opportunities. That's been sort of the driving forces. But one thing we will need to do is to get a different sort of financial and fiscal analysis and a market analysis, because even the one that was done for the charrette is 18 months old. And knowing that we have this unique opportunity, it could be some, some sort of economic driver like you suggested.
Yeah, we, we were in an economic advisory meeting yesterday, and Baltimore County, or the Baltimore region, it's not just the county, I guess. We were dead last in the 25 metro areas in the country, 25 largest metro areas for economic growth, dead last. We, we've got to figure it out in this county how we're gonna, I know this has nothing to do with this, but I'm, I'm just making a comment here because it was very depressing to sit there yesterday, and we don't seem to be driving jobs that are allowing people to live sustainable lives. We do a lot of logistics in this county, and they top out at about $20, $25, which is about $40,000 to $50,000. You know, you can barely live in your, your mother's basement at that, and I just think that some of these opportunities, especially this where we're, where the county's out spending money, that we look at ways to drive economic development, where we're actually creating jobs that pay well, not just more development of homes and, you know, entertainment districts that are mixed into it, but that's...
Well, I certainly look forward to working with the new Director of Economic and Workforce Development. I think that his experience and expertise should help to inform us as well as we move forward on this property.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Young.
Thanks, Chairman. Director Lafferty, the county has not traditionally been involved in redevelopment or development of any particular area, correct? We sort of...
Correct.
With the recent, I don't know why I keep doing that. The recently established, or in terms of signed into law, West Side Reinvestment Authority play a role in the answering some of the questions that were brought up by my colleague from the East Side?
I think, I think potentially, and I think as we recognize standing up that organization will take a little bit of time, and we want to try to move sooner than that, but I think the Redevelopment Authority most definitely will be able to play a role in helping us to guide in future years.
And thinking ahead to where they've reinvigorated the discussion about the potential red line going right through, well, that side of town and along Security Boulevard, it only makes prudent sense to also have some sort of stake in the game related to redevelopment or at least area that could be redeveloped along the potential route.
Absolutely. And in fact, the, historically, that was one of the sites. The mall property was a, a place where the red line would go before it went over to CMMS. And as we know from people who have attended the charrette and also at the red line meeting yesterday, there's a lot of interest in the West Side residents to having access to East Side jobs at TPA and other places. And while they may not be, you know, the highest paying jobs in the county, they're good paying jobs, and TPA obviously is a growing economic engine.
Excellent. I think a lot of this, as you mentioned too, are aspirational, especially with the input that we've received from the community. Appreciate you and the administration's willingness to, one, put folks' thoughts and hopes into an actual plan to shoot for, even if we don't end up getting to 100% of what has been envisioned, but working towards that end goal collectively has been a breath of fresh air working with you all. So thank you.
You're welcome. And I think as the county executive said at the very outset, we want this to be an asset for the community where it's located. We're not trying to displace anybody and looking really to build upon the strengths that are in the community, and so it needs to be able to reflect the needs of that community as well.
Yes, Raj.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilmember Erto, immediately after the, the economic advisory meeting, I contacted Mr. Wang, who just came on, on, yesterday was his first day, and briefed him on some of the discussions. So he will be joining us as, as observer, of course, to future meetings, but he was very excited about what I shared with him. So Mr. Wang is really excited and interested into continuing the dialogue about, you know, the manufacturing strategies versus the distribution strategies, which I thought was quite interesting in terms of where we go, and other jurisdictions across the country that have been able to engage businesses to come into their jurisdictions, like Kentucky, South Carolina, North Carolina. So I did immediately go back and share the information and shared the PowerPoint presentation with him.
And I only bring this up because I've, I've worked in Howard County for a long time. I know Director Lafferty spent a lot of time down there. This... Who's that?
Is that George?
And, you know, you could shoot a potato gun from Security Square Mall to the Howard County line, almost. There, just the economic vitality down there is unbelievable, and we, we have got to get to the point where we're, we're really looking at how are we going to create good paying jobs for our populace. We can talk about plans all day and build more housing, but if we don't create jobs that pay well, we're, we're, we're losing the game. And I'm not, this isn't an indictment of Director Lafferty or anybody else, but one of the things that was loud and clear yesterday was that we need to do better in Baltimore County of, of creating economic vitality for our citizens, because we're becoming poorer all the time. So it just concerns me. It's concerned me from the beginning, and I think we've got to get serious as a county with our state and federal partners and start working hard on, on bringing, you know, different sources of, of income to the area, and predominantly high-tech manufacturing might be a great way to do that. And we, and it's always been our strength in Baltimore County. We've been, you know, we just, we just watched Martin's, you know, is closing. That, they made more airplanes for the war effort than any other factory in the country, and we don't have that distinction anymore. You know, we're not producing, we're not sending our products out to the world from Baltimore County anymore. So I don't know how we get there, but I hope we can all figure it out. That's just my bully pulpit for full moon Tuesday. Sorry, Chair.
That's okay. I'm a co-sign with all your comments. I'm with you. Councilman Patoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it's important to note that there are three major initiatives going on the West Side simultaneously. We have one, the discussion that Mr. Lafferty brings before us today, the charrette and reimagining of Security Square is a major initiative to revitalize the West Side. At the same time, we also have the West Baltimore County Economic Development Authority that Senator Sidnor and Councilman Young have brought forward to, and this council was smart enough to enable that, to initiate it locally. And then the third one is Governor Moore's push to, to bring the red line back, which, you know, now that Baltimore is once again part of the state of Maryland, we are going to bring Major League Transit back to Baltimore. And so the red line will create that east-west tran, that east-west transit. And then yesterday, I was at Woodlawn High School for the, for the red line charrette, initial charrette work. And there was a lot of people there, a lot of energy there. And so it's very exciting and very encouraging to see people that show up for red line meetings, people that show up for reimagining Security Square. So I'm very hopeful that over the next 10 years, and sometimes it's hard for us elected officials to think 10 years out, but I think in this case, we do have to look at 10 years out. And so I see very encouraging signs in an area that does, and Councilman Erto, you're right. It does need a shot in the arm, and I think that the administration, the governor's office, and we have, we as a council have taken steps to move us in that direction. And so the needle starts to move here, and then 10 years out from now, we can look back and maybe for the red line, it'll take a little more than that, but, you know, we will get there, and we just have to keep our foot on the accelerator to get to, to, to get to that point. So I do have a question for you, Mr. Lafferty, and all that preamble. So I noticed that there's a one-for-one match, state to county, for security, and we are using 6.85 million for the acquisition for county funds. Is that because we, as the county, are going to take ownership of the property, so we're using solely county funds?
Well, the way we did it with the other parcel we bought from Sears, we actually got reimbursed from the state. And so what we will do is seek reimbursement. We will probably put our, will be our money out the door first, but seek reimbursement from the state for the, for 5 million, so that we will actually be using their money ultimately and still have our own money then, so we can better control. Because clearly, when you get state resources, you have to, there's different accounting than simply working with their own capital funds.
Because that was my second question. Okay, once we, once we have the acquisition behind us, and so from what I understand, we'll use our money, I think it was, is it 16 million total for the two parcels, for acquisition of the two parcels? 10 million and six around, ballpark?
Yes, 6.8.
And that, that will come back from the state as a, in form of reimbursement. And so then we will have another 16 million to redevelop?
About, about 14, or a little bit less because of other expenses. The charrette expense came out of the same account, certainly as we retain a third party who will help us with this redevelopment strategy, that'll come out of that account. So things, little less than 14 million right now we have available.
And that could be used for design, site prep, preliminary development?
Yes.
Those kinds of...
Infrastructure, other kind, other kind of work that has to be done. Because it's a very old site, and so we know there's going to be a different level of investment that's going to be needed in order to make sure all those utility systems, stormwater management, all those things are operating correctly. Entryways, road systems, that really, anybody who's been out to the mall know you just drive in and you just run across the parking lot. It's like crazy place.
What's the acreage there? Is it 140 acres?
90 acres total.
90 acres.
With this, with this, we will have one-third of it or 30 acres.
You, you make a good point, Director Lafferty. So if you haven't been to Security Square Mall lately, it's 90 acres of concrete on the surface, and then concrete and cinder block buildings. So it's nothing but hardscape. And so everything I've seen from the charrette doesn't have nearly that amount of hardscape. And so I think we'll see a much more green environment and a much more diverse in character and, and land character and building character as we move into the future. So, you know, these are all, like I said in the beginning of this discussion, very encouraging design, very encouraging signs, and look forward to us begin this implementation in this beginning phase that gets us to a better West Side.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sure. Director Lafferty, or maybe this might be better directed to our auditors. I'm looking at the second-to-last paragraph on page 28. Can I get an accounting of what we've put into this so far, plus the 6.85 that we're talking about today?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Like now?
Oh.
I mean, I can, I mean, if it's not immediately available, I can wait. But, so I'm just looking at that note, and I'm looking at...
The 10.6.
Well, I'm looking at 10, the 20 million originally. So the way I'm reading this is that we're, we're into this at about $40 million.
No, no, sir. It was 10 and 10 at first, and then 5 and 5. So we have a total of 15 from the state, and the county's put 15 million in it as well. So we, we have 30 total. Money has been expended on the acquisition at the Sears, various appraisal costs, also the charrette, title work, other things related to the first acquisition, but also then the charrette itself. Charette itself is also baked into those costs that have been expended to date.
So I, I can't begrudge county investment and state investment, although it's all the same taxpayer. So there's no really such thing as county money and state money. It's all taxpayer money. So I don't begrudge investments in places in the county, especially when I'm asking the administration for investments in our communities in the 7th District. But what I'm not asking for in the 7th District is for the county to get into the commercial real estate business. And I think that we are taking a giant leap into unknown territory. And if this property was so valuable and the possibility so endless, the private sector would have done it. But we're $30 million into this already and we've had a Charette. And we're buying more land with no plan. I voted against the initial acquisition expenditure and I'm probably going to vote against this one as well. Again, I, I hate to do that because I'm asking for investments in my own district. But I think we're talking about millions and millions of dollars going to what is private commercial property. That's not what government is supposed to do. Government incentivizes. Government creates an atmosphere for the private sector to be successful so they can create the jobs that Councilman O'Tel was talking about. We're talking about the county being in the real estate development business. And I don't think that's where we should be. I really don't. And I, I hope this works out for my colleagues on the West Side and for the citizens on the West Side and that this benefits all of Baltimore County, because I'm going to assume that this next acquisition is going to pass. I just have a philosophical problem with where we're going with this. One thing I keep thinking about is, has anybody seen the money, the Money Pit, the movie? The Money Pit?
Yep.
Feels like we're in a money pit at Security Square Mall. And again, if the opportunities were so great, the private sector would have already been there. So I'm going to leave it at that.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Councilman Young?
I don't want to get into a history lesson about the property at Security Mall. I grew up on the southwest side of Baltimore County, grew up and actually have the unique opportunity of representing the area that I grew up in and live in. Security Square Mall was my stomping ground as a kid. I turned, I had to wait to walk there until I turned 13 years old and after I did, I lived at that movie theater probably more than I should have. Every dollar I made from an allowance went to going to see movies at that theater. I would see folks and hear folks from outside my neighborhood and outside the area, criticize, talk about why they wouldn't go there and have to decide on which battles to fight to stay quiet and kind of grimace at what they're talking about because it wasn't what I was experiencing on the ground, in my community, in my mall, in my area. I've been able to watch it, I remember what it was, I remember what it, I know what it is and I know what it could be. And I'll say that while I know nobody is necessarily attacking any particular side, this sticks very close to home for me for the reasons I just mentioned. There has been no investment there for 30 years because there has been a lack of an agreement from the private sector on what to do with five individual parcels owned by five individual owners that will not agree on what they need to do. And in that case, I completely agree with my colleague from the East Side that it is time for government to incentivize, it is time for government to step in and to encourage the investment in the area that has been not, that has been neglected, not because there hasn't been opportunity, but because recognizing that the opportunity that could have been there had there been investment from the private sector, but because there was no agreement because there were multiple owners, now it's time for everyone to grow up, recognize the potential, listen to the community that has also been neglected, not just from an economic standpoint, but from also a political standpoint, and put our money where our mouth is and work together to resolve an issue that if successful can benefit everybody around the county, including the folks on the southwest side. I don't think that we're getting into the investment or the real estate business. It has been a concern from the very beginning of this. But I will say that this is uncharted territory because we have not had to be in this situation before, because we have always left it to the private sector to make the decision. And when we've done that, and it's taken 30 years to do so, it's time to make it, take a step forward, again, be the adults in the room, bring everyone together and recognize the fact that we can do something great somewhere by utilizing a private and public partnership in a way that we have never done so before. With that, I appreciate the opportunity to speak again.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments? Thank you very much, Director Lafferty. Thank you. Next we move on to page 30, Mr. Lawrence Richardson.
Good afternoon Chairman Jones, members of the council.
Good afternoon.
I'm here today to, for the administration, to seek your approval of an agreement with Johns Hopkins University, the Bloomberg School of Public Health General Preventive Medicine Residency Program for a three-year residency, residency training with Johns Hopkins being the sponsoring institution and Baltimore County Department of Health as the participating site. Under this agreement, the preventive medicine residents would complete a full-time rotation with Baltimore County Department of Health and contribute to various public health activities, enable equitable access to health services, evaluate health programs and implement quality improvement projects. The Baltimore County Department of Health will be compensating each resident or Johns Hopkins University with $4,700 per month. The funding is coming from a grant from Maryland Department of Health. This is a three-year agreement with the expectation not to exceed $70,000 total. Would be happy to take any questions.
Any questions, comments from the members? Don't hear any, Mr. Richardson. Thank you very much, Deputy Director.
Thank you.
Next we move on to page 34, Ms. Faith Thomas, Real Estate Compliance. Let me see, Windsor Mill Road. You can do both of those at the same time.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and council members.
Good afternoon.
The administration is requesting approval of two contracts to, to acquire land and easement access spanning in total approximately 0.073 acres for $16,192 for the construction of a sidewalk along Windsor Mill Road in Gwin Oak. Fiscal matter seven is a contract with Pierre L. Georges for $5,934 for land at approximately 0.006 acres and easement access 0.01 acres located at 6509 Windsor Mill Road. Fiscal matter eight is a contract with Douglas Elycia for $10,258 for land 0.028 acres and easement access 0.021 acres located at 6741 Windsor Mill Road. The properties are zoned DR 5.5. The acquired land will be used for highway widening areas and areas in paving and the easements will be used for drainage and utility easements or revertible slope easements necessary to retain and support the highway and/or adjacent property. Each contract's compensation amount takes into account any adverse impacts to the site improvements.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments from the members? Thank you very much, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you very much.
And I guess I'll move on to Deb Schindler again. I'm sorry, Deb, I didn't, I did not see this earlier. You would have had, had taken care of it then. The Church of the Good Shepherd.
Good afternoon again, everyone. I have the privilege of having Chief of Fire join me on this endeavor because we are very proud to come to you today as an administration to request an approval of a contract to acquire an improved property of approximately 6.11 acres for 2 million for the new location of the Catonsville Fire Station. The Church of the Good Shepherd currently owns the property to be acquired, which is located at 736 Emerson Avenue in Catonsville, and it is zoned DR-5.5, which is density residential, 5.5 lots per acre. After reviewing several properties over the past three years, the county, not only county-owned property, but property that was for sale, the county believes this site will be the ideal location for a new five-bay fire station. The location is centrally located in the service area to continue to provide the quickest response times for the citizens. This location is also near many large access roads such as 695, 95, 295 and others. There is a limited market on sites, as you can imagine, that are centrally located in the community where it would be able to, to still have a good response time and have enough land to build what we need for this, for this new fire station. The area is in a mature neighborhood and the typo, topo graph seems amendable to minimal grading, which is really an ideal situation for construction. I do want to let everyone know, if approved, design is estimated to be completed August 6th of 2024. We're fast-tracking this. And then the bids for construction would be due August, excuse me, November 1st of 24, with then estimated construction to start November 16th of 24 through November 16th of 26. And of course, both Chief and I are here to answer any questions that you may have about this acquisition.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions, comments from the members? We're all about a new fire station.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Young?
Thank you for your collaboration while you've been looking for an appropriate site to upgrade, one, the fire station and make sure that it's safe for the folks to work there. And I just want to bring this up because I know it's going to come up now that this is out there, plans for the current fire station.
I'm going to let the chief speak upon that.
Sure.
Thank you for that question, sir, and thank you for the opportunity to be here with you today. We have really good plans for that fire station if it is approved. I've presented a request to the county executive to maintain that fire station, to turn it into a fire museum for Baltimore County to, to display the history of the Baltimore County Fire Department and also maintain your office, sir.
Yeah.
And the congressional office and the Santa House and keep it intact as a, it's a staple in the, in the neighborhood and the families and the children love to visit it. And we hope, if approved and able, we are going to maintain that site as a public safety museum.
And as it stands, for folks that may not know, it is the oldest fire station in the county that's still operating in the original location.
Yes.
As it is right now.
Yes.
But it also holds historical, you know, value and makes sense too why there would be a location for.
Yes, and it would be a great atmosphere for that.
Excellent.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Chair? Yes. One quick question for the chief. Chief, that's a, it's a dual-engine, dual-medic house right now?
No, sir.
Are we getting a second medic there with, with the new station?
We will be determining the full safe, full response needs in that station once we get the plans completed.
But yes, it is, it is dual-engine, so we'll have two engines there.
Yes, sir.
And we only have one medic.
Yes, sir. But we need another.
So we.
But we're, we're not finished with those plans, sir. So I cannot commit to that yet.
I'm just asking.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Rogers? Oh, nope. Ms. Rogers, if you don't mind, will Councilman Catch?
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. I have a question for the chief. I'm sure you're familiar with the Fire Museum that's on York Road in Timonium.
Yes, sir.
Is this what you're proposing for Catonsville then is going to be different? I just wouldn't want to see a situation where you have competing museums. I, I assume you've been to the one in Timonium, those who haven't, it's very impressive, the fire equipment they've been, they've brought in, it is quite an impressive collection. And I just hope that we're not going to get into a competition between the two.
No, sir. That is not the intention. We could never, ever compare to that museum. That is the Maryland State Museum and we hope to support that museum with advertisement within our little Baltimore County hub.
Good.
To promote them and to bring attention to them as well.
It's, it's quite amazing. It really is, the collection that they have.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Catch. Any additional, yes?
Unless, Madam, Ms. Rogers? Ms. Rogers, did you, you were in front of me, so.
Well, I will always defer to you, Councilman, for granted.
You want to go, Ms. Rogers?
Okay.
I'm passing it back to you.
Thank you, sir.
No, after you, no.
So appreciate that. We're just so excited to finally be able to settle on a space because we have looked diligently for the last two years to find the ideal space. So Councilmember Young, we thank you for your patience, but it was a difficult task to find the, the right space. So want to commend Ms. Schindler and her team and also the chief and her team. And Councilmember Catch, I, I have had the pleasure of visiting the State Fire Museum. It is incredible, but as the chief said, we had that discussion when the chief and her team presented the proposal of what the current site could be. We're very excited that being able to coordinate with the State Fire Museum and the, we'll call it little just because of size, but it's a really exciting opportunity for a community volunteer and maintaining the historical presence of that fire station there in Catonsville. So it's a two, a dual approach. As we build, we'll plan out in conjunction with the State Fire Museum, which is incredible. If you haven't, those of you listening, if you haven't been there, it's definitely worth the trip to Towson, just, just right up the road on York Road. It's kind of hidden behind a couple of buildings, but it's incredible sight, very, very informational as well in terms of the, the history firefighting in our state. And we're proud that that museum is here in Baltimore County. Thank you, sir, for acknowledging me.
Thank you so much. And again, congratulations, Councilman Young. It's always good to have a nice new fire station in the community providing the services to the citizens. Okay, any additional questions or comments?
You forgot about me already?
Nope, of course not. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I want to go back to 4423. I should have mentioned this when Chief Baikoff was speaking before us, but now that Chief Run is in the hot seat, so to speak, over there. The chief and I had an occasion to have a discussion just on the overall state of the union, so to speak, in, in the, in the fire department and discuss some issues going on. And I think that that discussion was timely given Bill 4423 that is, has money coming in to help the, the mental health of our first responders. And I think that we think a lot about the, the police department and how difficult of a job that is. And I think sometimes we miss how difficult of a job and how stressful it can be for a first responder to be on the scene, for someone in a very serious situation. And we're, we're. And we're, we're, we're lacking manpower in EMS, correct, chief?
Sir.
So our folks have to work because they are mandated. The, the, the fire department is mandated to have these responders on-call 24/7, and these folks are working extremely hard. So I just thought that, given the nature of our discussion, what, a week ago, and the bill that came before us today was just appropriate to, to call out our first responders and, and just let them know that we appreciate the work that they do and that it is a very difficult job that can take its toll on you mentally when you are responding to multiple calls a day with people within inches of their lives and you're trying to help them. So, thank everybody in the department for me, chief. I should have brought it up when, when Chief Baikoff was up there, but thought of it when I saw you.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, Councilman Crandall, in case you didn't know it, those things aren't lost on me. I don't know if I ever mentioned it to you, but I served in the fire department for 32 years.
Yeah, I know that, I know that, and Councilman.
Anybody here ever heard that before?
I know that, and Councilman Toko was a planner.
Chair, you ought to.
And Councilman Catch was in the legislature, the state legislature, I know all of it.
Okay.
Councilman Mark was part of the Department of Transportation, I know that.
Fuck the shit, he was a soldier.
And we all, we all know that we have a combat veteran on the, on the council, and we're still all wondering what Ortel does. We'll find out.
Well, look, I, I wasn't sure if I had mentioned it before, but we certainly appreciate your comments. It is a tough job. I mean, the reality is, especially in the fire department, you get an opportunity to see, unfortunately, a lot of bad things happen to good people, and you do your best to save them, but you can't save them all. In fact, most times you don't save them. And, you know, you see more than most people will ever see in their lifetime. You go out to see people on their absolute worst day of their life, and to you, it's almost like another day at the office because 10 minutes later, you're someplace else for somebody else's worst day in their life. And on and on and on and on. And I'm pretty sure, you know, we do all sorts of things and try to provide the mental health services to all of our first responders. We've come a long way. Back in the day when I first started, it was very macho, and you would be seen as something wrong with you if you ever asked for help. But nowadays, we've come to realize that, you know, when we look at the suicide rates amongst our first responders, we outpace everybody. And so it's, you know, it's very important that we provide those services to our members. It's very important that we recognize the challenges that people go through, especially when they provide the protections for our citizens. So, thank you very much. Any additional questions or comments?
Chair.
I had one.
One second, Councilman Catch.
This is, this, this will be good for you, too. So I, I just wanted to point out something, that we, we already have a Baltimore County Fire Museum that is at the headquarters building, as the Cube, as we call it, the scenic sixth district. And it, it's kind of buried in the building, it's not buried, but, you know, it's not, it, it's probably not as visited as it could be. And one of the, one of the absolutely cool things about the Baltimore County Fire Museum is, and a lot of people don't know this in the Baltimore region, but a lot of the original firehouses that were Baltimore County were city houses. So for instance, I grew up in Hamilton in the city, and that was a Baltimore County Volunteer Firehouse, but some of the first firehouses were Waverly, I think Canton was one, or something like that, I don't know, I don't know them exactly. Got to the fire, to the monument out here in the plaza, a lot of the first firehouses that we had, or at least volunteer houses, were city firehouses. So it's kind of a neat history to see when you go to that museum, and that will probably be, I would assume that will move from headquarters down to Catonsville.
Yes.
So, so it won't necessarily compete with the State Fire Museum in Lutherville, but it will showcase some of our history here in Baltimore County, which is a, a rich history of firefighting.
It's a good opportunity for both to work together. I, I didn't know about the Baltimore County Museum, but certainly I want to visit it and see what it is. I, I did have a question for Chief Run very quickly. Are these services in this bill going to be available to the volunteer first responders as well as those that are the, in the fire department, et cetera?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, thank you.
In the 4423 bill, yes, sir.
Yes, that's, that's what I was referring to. Thank you, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any additional questions, comments? Nope, thank you very much, Chief Run, thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel, for all your support.
You're welcome. Next, we'll move on to Katrina Branch, page 48. Prevailing Wage Administrator. Ms. Branch, is this your first time coming before us?
It is.
Well, we're going to give you a clap before you start.
Thank you.
All right, now that's over, you're in the hot seat. No, go right ahead, we were talking about a labor compliance program?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and counsel. My name is Cantria Branch, and I'm the county's prevailing wage and local hire administrator, and we are seeking approval for the Contract Compliance Monitoring, Inc. contract, they're also known as CCMI, who will provide compliance monitoring and certified payroll processing services for the prevailing wage unit. This cooperative purchase vehicle will provide staffing for adequate compliance of certified payrolls and other support functions required by this new county law. This contract value is $190,000 for one year, with an automatic renewal for one additional year. CCMI comes with an extensive history of experience in prevailing wage laws in Maryland, United States Department of Labor Davis Bacon, McNamara O'Hara, and other wage labor compliance programs. CCMI will primarily provide sufficient support staffing for prevailing wage unit with conducting weekly audits of certified payrolls, including reviews of proper work classifications on a day-to-day basis, overtime shift holiday, and special paid work categories. They will provide onsite interviews and compliance with apprenticeship standards, and any findings of noncompliance will be submitted to the prevailing wage administrator, who has the authority for enforcement. The prevailing wage administrator enforcement authority includes imposing progressive measures for mediation as a first-level reprimand for noncompliance, and sanctions up to including debarment for one year, as well as the required transparent reporting records and data. Use of the CCMI contract provides the prevailing wage administrator time to attend the required pre-bid and pre-construction meetings to go over disclosures required by this law. The prevailing wage administrator is also responsible for responses to the U.S. Department of Labor audits for noncompliance with their programs and the county local hire compliance and reports. The need for an experienced labor compliance support service provider such as CCMI will provide the necessary staff to handle the increase and ensure the law is supported effectively and efficiently as required by county law. There any questions?
Well, thank you for your comments. Any questions or comments from the members? Obviously, we passed a prevailing wage law like some time ago, it's very important, it's good to see you. Yep, here a question, Councilman Ortel.
So prevailing wage, is that more Davis Bacon for, or is it Contract Service Act?
It is a, Davis Bacon is the U.S. Department of Labor, so our prevailing wage is just an interchange of, of, of like, of wording. Davis Bacon is a prevailing wage for.
So is this just bringing county jobs up to a prevailing wage level, or?
Within, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, go right ahead.
Within the law, it was designated as to what level of contract prevailing wage standards would meet. And upon working on the implementation, we found that we needed infrastructure around compliance, because there are a number of contracts that after, what is it, 300? $300,000. $300,000, we have to do ongoing monitoring and compliance to make sure that the successful bidders adhere to the provisions, the prevailing wage provisions in that contract. So this is our attempt to ensure that we have out-the-gate compliance measures, because the, the county did not have a compliance mechanism, because we didn't have a set criteria for the contracts that we would require prevailing wage standards.
So are we, so we have jobs where we're setting our own internal saying we're going to pay prevailing wage?
The, the contractor has to meet the prevailing wage standards that's set forth, it's federal, correct?
Well, right, on federal jobs, but.
No, no, these are contractors who do work for us.
Right, so are you saying we're paying them the same as a federal government job would pay?
Not necessarily a federal government job, but the federal, what is Davis Bacon salary levels for certain jobs, any contract that we put out for bid, we have to advertise within it the prevailing, prevailing wage requirement, that these contractors must meet the requirement. What this contract is, is a support to make sure that they do it, is the contractors' employees that we're monitoring, not county.
I understand that, I'm just not understanding where we pay prevailing wages.
The, the state of Maryland provides the wage rates for our contracts and our.
Okay, so they're state prevailing, they're not, it's not, this is, has nothing really to do with Davis Bacon or Congress.
No, if we receive funding from the federal government, that's something totally different, but this is solely for the county.
Okay, thank you, I, I was just confused by.
The Davis Bacon statement?
Well, the term prevailing wage in this situation.
Okay, the definition of prevailing wage.
I'm used to it more in a, like a federal setting, yeah.
Understand, but we decided to implement a prevailing wage standard here in the county with the passage of legislation in. 2021. November, it was November of 2020. Of 2020, we passed this, but we had to build the infrastructure.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Ortel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I remember in 2020, we had a pretty robust discussion about this. And so, Councilman Ortel, just for the sake of clarity, as I understand it, if we have a capital project and it is at least $300,000, and we have a contractor that is a low bid on that, part of that low bid qualification means that the contractor will pay the construction workers that are working on that contract, the prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage, yes.
Which says here is the hourly rate and fringe benefit rate paid for comparable work in the private sector within the county. Does that help? Yeah, and that's determined by?
The Maryland Department of Labor.
Maryland Department of Labor. I remember during the discussion in 2020 that we, some of the members were very interested in it and the monitoring of it, and so thank you for building the infrastructure. It would be helpful, and I think we discussed this, to maybe get a report on how the contractors are doing it on annual basis, perhaps, that if we have any contractors that aren't meeting that prevailing wage, that we can, at least they know that it's known by the county administration and the folks that work on the projects, but also the council members would be aware of those contractors that are not in compliance with meeting prevailing wage.
But you know our position is transparency.
So I'd definitely be interested in, I don't know if any of the other members would, but.
Right, but that's why we needed this infrastructure. It was impossible with the infrastructure that we have right now to, to do this and monitor this to the degree where we can, you know, meet compliance, to meet the standards specified in the legislation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any additional questions or comments from the members? Well, today is, thank you very much, appreciate you, Cantina. And everybody have yourself a wonderful evening, we'll see you next week. Wade, Wade, Wade.
Mr. Boy.
Yes. Can I skip you? Can I skip you?
It's trouble, chairman.
Which one are you? Number 11? Yes, 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 number 11, page 23, security services, thank you so much, come on up. How did I miss that?
That's what happened.
Security, security. Thank you so much, because we were, we were on our way out the door. I had my coat on.
And George, and Wade.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I wasn't going to let him forget.
Thank you, we still, we still have somewhere to go here, but we still got things to do. Go right ahead, I'm sorry, we still have our work.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And good afternoon, council members. The administration is requesting the approval of two contracts with armed security, which a trade name Butler Security, and also Metropolitan Protective Services to provide unarmed overnight roving patrol of the ballot boxes during an election cycle. A competitive bid process was completed, and the selected contractors were best qualified in our certified minority contractors. Both contractors provided services during the 2022 gubernatorial election process, and they are very familiar with our strict security requirements. Maryland law requires monitoring of our ballot boxes. There are a total of 35 ballot boxes throughout Baltimore County, however, one does not require patrol because it's located inside a secure building on the campus of the University of Maryland Baltimore County in the commons. Due to, due to staffing requirements to patrol the remaining 34 ballot boxes, the purchasing department divided our, our locations between two vendors to ensure adequate resources are available. The unarmed overnight roving patrol will patrol the 34 locations, I'm sorry, these contracts provide overnight, unarmed overnight roving patrol for the 34 locations. Each vendor would be responsible to patrol their assigned ballot box locations overnight, and it will be performed during the hours and at the frequency determined by the Board of Elections, tentatively every two hours between 5:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. If needed and appropriate, I can adjust the time and frequency of patrols. On Election Day, the coverage period would end at 8:00 p.m. when all ballot boxes have been removed from the locations and the ballot, or all ballots have been removed from the ballot boxes, excuse me, and the boxes are locked and secured by an election official. The total combined cost for this service is $219,440 for each election. Service would begin when the ballot boxes arrive, and that estimated arrival is normally 45 days prior to an election, to Election Day. In 2024, the primary is May 14th, and the general is November 8th. This multi-year agreement would allow the Board of Elections to have the services readily, readily available for future election cycles. Should council approve, the contracts will commence when, obviously when the ballot boxes arrive in about April of 2024. The contract amount for Butler Security is $83,160, and for Metropolitan Protective Services, it's $136,280. The Board of, I actually negotiated with the state board for Baltimore County to be reimbursed 50% of the cost of these security services. The reimbursement will be credited through our quarterly state billing. Thank you for your. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you very much, and election security is very important. Councilman Petoka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Ms. Lavoy, this is for May of twenty twenty-four, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then the following election. So I think you're doing a great job because here we are in August of twenty twenty-three, and you've moved this, you're moving this, and I think council will pass this, but you're moving this behind you so that you can focus on the next issue.
Yes.
Before you for secure elections. And so just want to commend you on the last election cycle, we had minimal problems here in Baltimore County, where around the country you hear very significant problems. And I don't think that's by coincidence, Ms. Lavoy. I think it's because you've been doing a great job.
Thank you.
And so thank you for bringing this before us, and then you can move on to the next step to fair elections.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Rogers?
I want to personally thank Ms. Lavoy for her partnership with us because when this first came out, it was an unfunded mandate, and we were like, what? Because in the first cycle, we did have to pay the full cost when the ballot boxes were first introduced, and Ms. Lavoy advocated unrelentingly to make sure that the jurisdictions could get some reimbursement for, because it was very expensive. You'll recall, the first time around, it was during the COVID pandemic when we were under emergency operations, and we had to, we were able to use federal funds to help offset the cost because this is a mandatory requirement from the state. So for Ruri to, well, Ms. Lavoy to get our colleagues at the state level to pay half of this, because it was a tremendous amount for all jurisdictions, so I just want to thank her for that, for being unrelenting to get some money to help us do something that the state required us to do. But unfortunately, it was an unfunded mandate, and a big unfunded mandate. So Ms. Lavoy, on behalf of the administration, we enjoy working with you, and we're glad that we can check this one off.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any additional questions, comments? Hearing none, we move on to Bill forty-six dash twenty-three, Councilman Cash, animal welfare.
Yeah.
Picking up stray animals.
Yes. Would it be okay if we start on page nine with forty-eight twenty-three, then go to forty-seven twenty-three, because they're not going to take much time? And.
Okay.
Okay, is that okay?
Whatever you like.
The first on forty-eight twenty-three deals with the ongoing traffic issues that we have in northern Baltimore County in relation to three state, well, state park, Gunpowder State Park, you have the Gunpowder River, and you have the Hyde Bike Trail. And adequate parking has never been provided by the state for these facilities. And because of it, some very dangerous road situations have occurred. And, you know, I've tried to work on this, et cetera, and the bill that I put in a couple of years ago prohibits parking on certain roads in Baltimore County. What this bill does, I was approached by the police, and they suggested that, in fact, they're right, that on Knatchcliff Road in northern Baltimore County, that there is enough space for some parking where the cars would park and not protrude into the traffic flow. So what this bill would do in essence is to allow the Department of Public Works to, in conjunction with the police, determine where the parking places are, which can be utilized, and then put appropriate sign. You know, unfortunately, it's only going to provide about ten more spaces, but if you have any familiarity with the issues up there, ten's better than none, that, that is for certain. So that, that's what the bill does.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the members? Go right ahead, Councilman Cash.
Yeah, Bill forty-seven twenty-three deals with a childcare center. If you're familiar with the office park at the terminus of Shawan Road traveling east, there's an office park, and what they'd like to do is, is to construct a childcare center. But part of the problem is that the property that's available is not adequate to fulfill all the requirements such as parking, et cetera. So what this does is, there's neighboring land that they own that's on R C six, and what this would do would allow half an acre of the land that's on R C six to be included in this project. And, you know, I don't usually, I don't like bills like this, so what I'm going to do is during the C Z N P, I'll be rezoning that half acre. So that's, this, this is a situation where time is of essence, and we certainly need childcare availability in the county.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the members? All right, Councilman Cash, keep it going.
Yeah, forty-six twenty-three, I'm, first of all.
Oh, there's a speaker, oh, 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 oh.
What's wrong?
We have a speaker? Forty-seven twenty-three. Mr. Christopher Mudd, where is Christopher Mudd?
Mr. Chair, he has, oh, he is on now, he wasn't on earlier, let me get Mr. Mudd on. Mr. Mudd, you are on.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the council, can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good, thank you for the time this afternoon, and I appreciate everything Councilman Cash had to say, and I'm here to support the, the request for this legislation. I think he hit the nail on the head with everything that he mentioned. This is a very small area that, that this bill would affect, a small area of R C six, and actually is currently improved with parking lot for which zoning relief was previously obtained, but this bill would allow the building to be located in the R C six portion. And as Councilman Cash said, we do intend to come back through the C Z N P to, to actually make this zone consistent with the, the R C six to be, to become M L R. But thank you to Councilman Cash for introducing the bill because it enables our client to get moving on this project sooner in a office park that frankly, coming out of COVID, has suffered a bit with, with, with departures of tenants, and they're hopeful that the ability to place this nice childcare amenity within the park will help to attract many new office tenants to come back into this park. So we certainly ask for the rest of the council's support on this, and I thank you for your time this afternoon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mudd. Okay, Councilman Cash.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to comment, you look so alone up there with nobody to your left or to your right, and, you know.
I miss you, sir.
Well, I, I miss all of you, and, and when I'm back, I promise I'll sit next to you, and I also will continue to run the meetings for you. So, oh, you're welcome. Anyhow, real excited about this next bill.
Normally have your hand right up my, back of my coat, holding me like a puppet.
Well, you know, that's my job, yeah.
Thank you.
That's my job, and I, so anyhow, getting to forty-six twenty-three, this is legislation I'm really excited about. I don't know if many people, I'm sure you do know, come think of it, because we have gotten messages from constituents about the situation at the animal shelter where it was really overcrowded with pets, they were asking for people to do foster care, et cetera. So this legislation that you have in front of you is really a new approach to dealing with animals that are lost or stray animals. And, Mr. Chair, I would like, I have a four-minute film that I would like to play for the members of the council, and I'm not even going to charge you for this movie. So, you know, so anyhow, I, thank you, and I see it's going on the screen now.
Okay.
It's because I have my microphone unmuted. Bear with me for a moment because I can't get audio for this video.
First time on YouTube, Chris?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, we, we do have three speakers who I believe are here in person.
And, Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting for the film, in essence, what this legislation does is it, right now, if someone finds a stray animal, they're required to turn that animal into, to Animal Services within twenty-four hours. This expands to seventy-two hours, and the theory is that if you have a person that finds a pet, and that person keeps the pet for seventy-two hours, and then actively attempts to find the owner of the animal, because obviously, if you find an animal in a particularly, particular community, that's probably where that animal lives, and, and of course, it's gotten away from its owner. So this, this legislation will require, for instance, the person to see if the animal is tagged, has any identification on the, the animal, and I understand that all the firehouses in Baltimore County are going to be equipped with chip detectors. And it also talks about reporting it to Animal Services, and so that the services provided on internet, and, I mean, there's all these services that animal control has that will help the person who is keeping the animal for the seventy-two hours to find the owners. And, and the last, the lesson talks about social media, flyers, et cetera. So this is more of a community-based effort. And if you, once you hear the film, you'll hear that it has been successful in reducing, for instance, the number of animals that have to be euthanized, and it also will increase the number of pets that end up back with their owners, which I know is important to, to many people. So I'll stop there, and I see the film is up, so are we ready or?
Yes, I want to try something, if you could just mute yourself, Councilman Cash.
Sure.
Thank you.
Or turn the mic off, just let it play through your, your computer, we can, we can hear, I can hear. Thank you, Ms. Bill Castro.
And, and I want to thank everyone for listening to the film. It was given to me by Ann George, who has worked diligently on this issue for many, many years. She's the one in two thousand fourteen. She's the one in 2014, when I was running for council, did brief me on the situation at the animal shelter at that time. I want to thank her, I want to thank the leadership at the animal shelter itself, and all those that worked on this legislation. So, yeah, I, I really thank them so much, and, you know, we can hear from them, and if anyone has any questions, certainly I'd be more than happy to answer them. There is a version that, a red-line version, that simply makes some technical changes to the bill that was sent to all of you earlier today.
Thank you, sir. We do have a question from Councilman Crandall.
Hi, Councilman Catch, how you doing?
All right.
Good. So, I'm reading the, the fiscal note that, obviously, as you, you expressed, extends the, the timeframe to 72 hours, three days. So, then, the fiscal note goes on to stay, state that the stray animal, or the person that picks up the stray animal may, but is not required to take the following actions, and those actions you talked about, getting the, the pet scanned for a microchip, or other markings, checking for a tag, contact Baltimore County Animal Services to give them the information that you, you, you have the, the pet, and then social media flyers, other public platforms. But I guess I'm caught up on a couple things. One is the "may," but is not required to. So...
I, I think if you look at the amended bill.
Okay.
It will, you, you did get it earlier today. I...
Well, unfortunately, I haven't, I haven't seen that, but there's an amendment that it, it changes "may" to "shall."
Well, what it does is, it gives more emphasis to the response that, that the person who's going to keep the animal for 72 hours has a responsibility to do these things. I, I just tried, I, I...
Because if you lose, if you lose your pet, three days is an extremely long time to be stressing out, out about where your pet is, and you call the, you, you called Baltimore County Animal Services, they don't know about if anybody has your pet, because no, no one's been required to, to notify them.
Well, the, the, or, the person that loses a pet, many times will call Animal Services to see if they possibly have...
Correct, but if some, what I'm saying, if someone has, if someone happened to pick up the pet, and is now harboring the pet in their home, and they haven't reported it for three days, then you're lost for three days.
Well, we would hope that...
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Catch, I was just going to interject that, as part of that amendment that, that you requested, it, it, as you said, it, it turns the "may" into "shall," but it also, as part of that report, as part of that found stray animal report to the Animal Services Division, that must be done within 24 hours. So, in essence, Animal Control or Animal Services is notified within 24 hours, but the person can, I guess, hold on to the animal while they're trying to find the owner for up to 72.
Okay, so if you take in a stray, you're required, within a 24-hour period, to notify Baltimore County Animal Services?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Correct.
All right, I'm clear on that. Councilman, you and I haven't had an opportunity to discuss this, so I guess we can just do it publicly, since we're here. Would, would you consider putting in language that would make this a pilot? Let's see how it goes for a year, and see, see how it's working?
I don't quite know, oh, you mean, what you want to do is you want to put a, maybe have this program in place for a couple of years, or something like that? Is that what you're talking about? And then, you know...
Yeah, because I've heard, I've heard some, I've heard some concerns, and, and I believe one of my constituents who does this type of work, she is going to voice some concerns about the bill as well, and I, I did speak with her, and that's why I'm bringing up some of the things that I'm bringing, bringing up, because she lives in this world where she's, she's rescuing and, and getting dogs back to their homes on a regular basis. So, it was one of the, the points of discussion that I had with her, and maybe she'll bring that up in her comments when, when she speaks, but I was, maybe we can take that offline, as far as the pilot discussion goes?
Yeah, I, I just, I just think as far as, as well, regarding a pilot, I don't know how long it would need to, in essence, to find out how it's working. So, it might be a year, a year and a half, but we could talk offline about that.
Okay, let's take that offline, and, and we'll let this, the, the other council members who want to talk about it, or we'll get to our speakers that have been waiting patiently.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Catch.
You're welcome.
Councilman Catch, I, I do have, first of all, I commend you on coming up with this bill. I think it's a good idea. I, I would like to discuss it with you a little more. I have an issue, everything sounds great, but I have an issue with the "shall." I think, you know, this bill is powered by people with good intentions, doing the right thing. I see a stray animal, I bring him in my home, I care for him, I put up posters, I notify the Animal Services that I have the animal, I send a picture, hopefully, we can find the owner. But I guess what frightens me a little bit, that may get people the wrong impression, if, if the words are, "I shall do these things," and I do everything I just mentioned, but I don't take the dog to the fire station to check his collar. I don't do that. And then, all of a sudden, something happens, and this is a crazy world we live in, and somebody's suing me next week because I didn't do one part of the "shall," you got a whole list of things I shall do, and I did all of them except for one. And I'm just wondering, is "shall" necessary when we're dealing with people who, who are trying to do the right thing in the first place?
This whole issue of "may" or "shall" has been something that I've wrestled with this entire time, and I think that it would be beneficial to the council to hear the witnesses who've worked so diligently on this legislation, and to get their perspective. But just to tell you, I have tortured back and forth between "may" and "shall," and have tried language in between, but, you know, there, there's really little middle ground between "shall" and "may." So, if it's okay with you, if you could hear the witnesses, and I'm sure they will address this issue.
Okay, so let me just add one more example, and then we'll hear the witnesses. I gave an example where I said, "I'm worried that somebody may somehow find me liable because I did not do all the "shells." Here's another example. I'm not getting in it. I love the animal, I love to save the animal, but you know what, there's a list of things I gotta do, and I don't have time to do it. So, I don't do anything. I guess drive on by. I let the stray dog keep on roaming the streets.
So, Mr. Chair, maybe, and again, maybe we want to take this offline, I don't know, but just thinking out loud, is maybe a way to thread the needle on this, is the "shall" is, report that you have the animal to Baltimore County.
Right.
Within the 24-hour period, that is your "shall."
Right.
Now, as far as the other things, social media, you may rescue a dog, and you might not even have a social media account. So, what do you, so, and how do you reach that requirement when you don't have the ability for some, some of these other, other mechanisms?
Well...
The scanning of the microchip, I mean, I think that's kind of essential as well, but...
I mean, I think you're dealing with people, we're going to bring up the witnesses, and, Chris, you can call the first one, but I guess the point is, we're dealing with people with a good heart to begin with.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm always fearful that if you make the rock too heavy, people just won't participate, and, or be fearful. And if you, even if you talk about social media, right? If you're a young person, you're on Instagram, you're on Snapchat, the old person, you're on Facebook, who knows where you are with social media, if you're there at all. But anyway, let's call up the speakers.
Mr. Chairman, Animal Services has a website. They, you know, this information is available if there are missing animal, I'm sorry, if there are found animals, the Animal Services can post it. So, I'm sure if the person says, "I don't have a computer," et cetera, that Animal Services will actually do it. So, but, you know, I think we'll benefit from the witnesses to, to this legislation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, first speaker, Ms. Bill Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, our first speaker is online by phone, so I don't even think I can make this person a panelist, but I'm going to unmute her. Her name is Leah Biddinger.
Okay.
Ms. Biddinger?
Hello, how are you?
I'm well. You may begin your testimony.
Okay, so, part of my, part of my concern with the bill as it, or the proposed bill as it stands, is the "may" and the "shall." Um, I feel that it should be "shall," because I, I, first of all, I'm president of Sussex Community Association, and I'm founder of Bring 'Em Home Animal Rescue. So, this is my life, this is what I do. Last year, I scanned a thousand, roughly a thousand lost pets to, to attempt to get them back home. People rely, when their dog is chipped, that, that chip is going to be scanned, and someone's going to reach out to them. So, "shall" has the verbiage that is used, and not "may," but it, but not required to, because that leaves too much playroom. My other ask is, in, in, you know, in this, is to make this a temporary, try it for a year, see how it works. Baltimore City does something similar, and it does not work for them. Many dogs go missing and are never seen again. My other thing, my other concern is, most average citizens are not safely able to contain a stray dog in their 72, or for 24 hours, let alone 72 hours. Safely means keeping that dog, that stray, away from your resident animals, your children, you don't know the, the dog's vaccine status. We don't know the resident dog's vaccine status. So, we keep a dog for 72 hours, and then we bring it to the shelter, and let's say it's picked up Distemper from the resident dog, or it's picked up Parva, or it's picked up something else from the resident dog. I have walked into many houses to scan dogs and found children, toddlers, three, four years old, two years old, climbing on top of a stray dog. We don't know the triggers of a stray dog. You do not know what you are dealing with, bringing a stray into your home. Um, so, I guess my, my ask is that the verbiage should, should say "shall." The, I would like it to be a, a trial period of one year, to see how this works, and we really need to look at the, the safety of, of, of people being able to bring a dog, you're now giving them permission to hold on to a dog for 72 hours, that is not going to, we don't know that they're able to keep that dog safe from there, and we don't know if they have, if the, the stray dog has medical conditions, could be diabetic, could have other medications, heart, heart disease, or heart issues that it needs medication, and you could kill a dog three days without, you know, insulin or heart medication. As far as scanning the dog, if they're not able to take the dog to be scanned, then they can, which they do frequently, reach out on social media, reach out to Animal Services by a phone call, and someone can come scan that dog. As I said, I've scanned roughly a thousand dogs in 2022, dogs and cats, I'm sorry, in 2022, in an attempt to get them back to their homes. Um, those are the things that concern me, just safely containing the animal, the 72-hour period, I, I think it's a, I think it's good in theory, but I think this is putting a Band-Aid on a gunshot wound, honestly. We need to address the issues at the shelter, and I've started addressing those with the county executive. I had a conversation with my councilman.
If you can, if you can wrap it up, please.
Okay, so, temporary, um, I wanted to see it to be changed to temporary, change the verbiage from "may" to "shall," and then, um, you know, if they must, they must, you know, report this in some way.
The, uh, Mr. Chairman...
Yes, Councilman Catch?
I, I don't think you've seen the newer version, which does mandate that the party that finds the animal must contact Animal Control within 24 hours to report the, the animal, and certainly, no one is obligated to house these pets for 72 hours. I mean, if they don't feel comfortable, I mean, they can take it to the animal shelter. So, the "shall" is in the amended version, and if you were to leave your email address, I'm sure that, you know, we can email you the amended bill.
Okay. All right, meanwhile...
Thank you for testifying, Leah. Have a good national night out.
Okay, and, um, next speaker, Ms. Bill Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for testifying, yeah.
Our next speaker is Stephen Milan, who is here in person.
Mr. Milan, thanks for coming in, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Jones, thank you, delegates. Hi, Wade.
Hi.
I'm the newest member of the Animal Services Advisory Commission. I was appointed at large. I came into the position, and I kind of felt like I joined the Navy on Pearl Harbor Day. I know some of you are aware of some of the severe problems that exist at the shelter. I was interested in Chairman Jones's remarks regarding pressure situations, pressure jobs. This is an identical, our staff at the animal shelter faces almost identical stress and conditions that you, that you elaborated on. I just, my colleague is going to give some of the more prescient statistics and some of the findings. I just, I'm here to assure the council that the Animal Services Advisory Commission is exploring all options to improve performance of our services. It's an extremely hard challenge to maintain a municipal animal shelter, rather than a private one, who sometimes they have the option of capping, you know, residents and refusing. We're in a different position, because our, our shelter has to monitor legislative mandates, and that's become very difficult in this situation. So, I just wanted to let you know that the Animal Services Advisory Commission is exploring both local, regional, and national strategies, and we will be evaluating them, and maybe bringing them to work, to you to enhance this performance, because we're not happy with it, the animal cert, the animal shelter is not happy with it, and we think we need to look all over the country and all over the world, to try to find situations and solutions that will help Baltimore County. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your testimony and your service to the commission. Next speaker, Ms. Bill Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Peter Richkus, who is also here in person.
Okay, she's next. Hello, Ms. Ms. George? So, Ms. George?
Good afternoon. Wait till you get to the mic. You know, we just want everybody to hear you. And we will time you.
Also, in the advisory commission as appointed by Councilman Catch.
Speaking to the mic.
I'm also a retired dog behavioral therapist. I started a practice here in 2005, and I sold it in 2020. And now I'm, I really, Wade and I have been focusing on the animal shelter for almost nine years now. I want to say that this issue, first of all, there are things that I think you're not aware of. There are only three jurisdictions in Maryland that even require that you take a lost or stray dog or cat to a shelter. Okay? Prince George's County, immediately. You find one, the law says immediately, forthwith. And the other one is Anaronda County. They have a three-day, and they're struggling with it. The reason is, first of all, most people don't even know it because there's not enough communication with an education of the public. Okay, if you come along, you know, Corey Johns, I don't know if many of you know him. We had this issue on Sunday. He was coming back from New York, six hours away, and his brother called him that somehow the dog got out. Okay? And if they had just waited until he got home, it probably would not have been a good situation. The dog was running up Pulaski Highway. He called me, he said, "What do we do?" You know, "What should I do?" And I said, "Well, first of all, you want to get a team together to start circling the area, okay? From your, just concentric searchers, drive around, ask people." And long story short is, he got the animal back. I also made a poster up. Right away, I emailed it to him. He emailed it to his brother. They went to Kinko's, copied it, put it up, okay? Because of those efforts, that dog was back in his home before he got home, six hours up from New York. So that's one thing. The other thing you need to know is that of the animals that go into the animal shelter, 75%, as many as 75% in this shelter are strays. They're not people abandoning their animals. They are stray animals. And most of them have loving homes. But the grandchild came over and left the door open, okay? This has happened to me. My lawn man left my gate open. This happens, and they really need to get back. And they tend to stay in the area. If you saw, I don't know if you saw in that video, I think it's like 85% of the animals are returned if they stay in the area. What happens is when they take them and take them out to Baldwin from Dundalk, from Catonsville, from Pikesville, they can't, people don't even know where they are. And they don't even know where to, how to find that. I called on Sunday out to the shelter to report this animal loss. I couldn't get anybody. Okay, you know, press this, press that, press this. So, I mean, this is actually happening. So keep in mind, most jurisdictions do not have a law that says, "You must take this and put it here". And when you take it, you don't put it out in North Baltimore County, you know? Hopefully, maybe at one time, we'll have some regional centers where there is one in Dundalk, and you can say it, and it's right there. But I think the key here is that the shelter is overcrowded. A lot of these animals are coming in, and they don't need to. And what you need to recognize is, this is happening every day. If you're on Facebook, if you're on Nextdoor, you've got to be seeing dogs being reported, and people are doing it in their neighborhoods informally. We need to educate the public about what to do with lost animals, what to do if you don't have money for pet food. There are three centers in Baltimore County where they give out free pet food. And people who need that support just need to be connected with that. Maybe we need to have pet food centers in other areas. This whole issue is, and the law was written to protect the owner of the animal. I want to share one other thing for you. I've talked to five different directors of animal shelters in our area. And yesterday, I talked to Howard County. And Howard County does this. They have a 30-day. You can keep the animal for 30 days. I think that's too long. Okay, but you have to, within 24 hours, I think, before you take the animal in, or I guess within 24 hours, you have to do three things. You have to file a finding report with the animal shelter. You have to get the animal scanned and prove it, either at a veterinarian or a firehouse or whatever. You have to have a statement and submit that as a part of it. And the other thing is, you have to send them a digital picture, which I think is another alternative. I think we need to look at this issue and see what is best work. And do we really need a law that says, "Take this animal within 24 hours or even 72 hours to a shelter" that is so remote for the rest of the people? Because a lot of people can't get to it. And I'd be happy to have discussions with any of you about all this. A number of us, Steve and I and some other members, have looked at this for what we can do. And I think this is one thing that definitely is a possibility. Do you have any questions?
No, I thank you so much for your comments. I appreciate it. And I think, you know, we probably just need to... I'll reach out to you, Wade. We'll have some more discussion. I appreciate your comments. I was listening, and I don't want to get into a... I mean, we all have, you know... I don't want to get into it too deep. But I'm always concerned about making the rock too heavy. When you tell somebody, "You got to do this, and you got to do that", and I talked about working 32 years in the fire department, I got to be to work at a certain time. And I'm going to be there for 24 hours when I get there. And I want to do the right thing. But you're telling me that I got to do all of these things. I have to.
You don't have to do any of them. You don't have to pick up the dog. You could just let it stay.
Exactly. My point. I don't think that's the best thing for the dog, but you're pushing my point.
It's unfortunate, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Sorry.
But that you didn't get the most recent form of the bill and read it before the meeting today. I think that would clear up that we addressed that issue. We don't want anybody taking anybody's dog if it doesn't, don't want anybody to do anything they don't feel comfortable with. If a dog is not, you know, there's no law that says you have to get this dog
Right.
and put yourself in jeopardy. And certainly, you shouldn't. If the dog is acting fearful, just leave the dog, and Animal Control can deal with it.
Okay. Well, I thank you so much. Any additional questions, comments from any of the members? Are we done now? Did I... Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience, this long meeting.
No, we appreciate your interest and your advocacy. Any additional questions or comments from the members? All right. I see everyone at National Night Out.